Ms. Green, Mr. Mattson, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's work session. Today is Tuesday, May 19, 2020, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. At this point, before we begin the meeting, I'd like to make a few comments, especially to the residents of the city of Harrisburg. Please let me remind you, I know that because of the COVID-19 virus that we have going on, we have an extremely large amount of trash that you're putting out, and that's okay. The city of Harrisburg will take all the trash. But please, I would like to reinforce the city of Harrisburg's bulk item pickup, and it's one bulk item per trash pickup day. That is our regulation, and our enforcement officer will be riding around the city of Harrisburg because we've been getting several complaints regarding people putting two and three bulk items out. You will be tagged. If you put more than one bulk item out per trash day, you will be tagged as a warning. And next will be a citation. So please remember, one bulk item per pickup per trash day. And then to move on to another announcement, I want to remind everybody to vote, please, on June 2, 2020. Please, if you cannot go out to vote, please get on the computer and go to votesba.com, or you may call, and they will send you one in the mail. The last day for that is May 26, so please do that today or tomorrow. The phone number is 877-868-3772 again. The number is 877-868-3772. And registered to vote. And the voting day is June 2, 2020. Thank you. Moving on to committee business, Ms. Daniels, is she with us tonight?
I'm either the roll call.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Allott?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Mattson?
Here.
Mr. Majors? Ms. Williams?
Present, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Mr. Majors is excused tonight. We'll move on with committee business. Ms. Daniels, Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm struggling with the getting into the meeting and opening the files at the same time. So could someone read the first ordinance?
Sure. It's a resolution, Resolution 32 of 2020. It's a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to PA Walkworks to fund citywide mapping of bicycle lanes and facilities and to conduct an analysis of bicycle traffic impacts and needs to assist with the development of an active transportation plan.
Is there someone for the city ready to present?
Hi, good afternoon, Councilwoman, this is Dr. Volmer, the advance manager. Can you all hear me?
You're very muffled on my end, but I'm on the cell phone, I'm not on the video.
She's still very muffled. Ms. Volmer, we can hardly understand you.
Okay, is this any better? I just changed the volume up.
Okay, go ahead and speak, let's see.
Okay, this is an application for $20,000 to the PA Walkworks. There is no match required, and $20,000 is the ceiling that we're committed to ask for. So we are applying for the full amount, and I believe Jeff Knight is on with us for Wayne Martin to speak about the project itself. It is to do a mapping, a citywide mapping of bicycle traffic as it exists now and access for bicycles.
Yes, hello, council members. I'm on as well as I believe Wayne is here. And providing a little bit of background to what this grant application is intended to do. We're looking to identify large trip generators, things like schools, places of employment, maybe large apartment buildings, things of that nature, and then also barriers between these large trip generators and identifying infrastructure and projects that would help us, help the community, bridge those barriers so that walking and bicycling, a lot of times those improvements go hand in hand, can be made more available to the community. In some cases, you know, I think these types of projects and these types of routes would be fairly obvious, such as crossing Interstate 83. You have 13th Street, 17th, 19th Street. And in other cases, it may be less obvious. If we're going kind of east-west in South Allison Hill, for example, there are a lot of different options for how the public could move along those corridors. So what the study is going to be doing is it's going to be, you know, identifying where the large hubs of that potential activity is, and then again, identifying barriers and routes. And then the next step would be possibly, you know, submitting grant applications for an implementation grant with PennDOT or possibly even further on with DCD or DEP, for example, at the state level, to then implement those projects. And I note that we've already had some discussion with PennDOT on something like the Interstate 83 widening. In whatever iteration it goes forward in, they will eventually be having to rebuild all of those bridges that I mentioned, 13th, 17th, and 19th. And we've already had conversations with them and commitments from them to ensure that those are designed to provide not only better and wider sidewalks, but also more space for the incorporation of bicycle infrastructure in the future. So this is kind of also, this is kind of looking further down the line, but it's also, we'll be addressing some of the more immediate, you know, needs and opportunities that will be presented in the next few years. And I don't know if Wayne has anything that he'd like to add to that?
Council, thank you, Wayne Martin, city engineer. I think Jeff covered everything. I just think it's a logical next step in the comp plan, you know, at the tail end of the comp plan to start developing a network and identifying those barriers, as Jeff said, to an active transportation network so that some of the projects, you know, at the moment may seem a little haphazard, but as long as they're part of a bigger plan, they'll make a lot more sense and, you know, allow us to get funding.
And of course, kind of another addition, you know, we were planning on moving forward with a lot of this stuff before the current situation came about, but the current COVID-19 situation has a lot of, in a lot of places, resulted in a switch of people from mass transit to things like walking and biking, and a lot of cities are finding that their current infrastructure is insufficient to adopt, to address this increased numbers. So, you know, having, it's likely that in whatever future is on the other kind of side of this, that there will be a sustained increase in these types of transportation in the future so that, you know, we were already working towards it, but the current situation has only made that need even greater.
Is that it for you guys?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the total cost of the project? Will the $20,000 cover all of it?
This is Wayne Martin again. So we have an idea what the plan will cost. We've done this before in planning situations. It could be a sort of a loss leader for an interested firm. We are going to put out an RFP if someone would be interested by defining the scope and setting the maximum amount for the proposal of $20,000. We did this before on the East, I'm sorry, on the 6th, 7th and Division Street corridor and actually got a lot of interest. The firms that responded knew they weren't going to make money on this project, but they felt it set them up for a future project. So I guess, long and short, we're going to look to get as much out of the $20,000 maximum as we can by overdefining the scope, which is what we have right now. We have a project scope written that probably has a value of about $40,000 to $50,000.
Wait, so I'm sorry, I missed it. I'm still struggling with the computer. So there will be a difference of $30,000 in terms of being able to complete the project?
No, I'm sorry. We were going to put out, we were going to put in the RFP, the request for proposal, that the maximum amount of funds available is $20,000. And then we were going to select the firm, the planning firm, that gave us the best, the best proposal based on the amount of available funds. I think, you know, in my opinion, based on work that we had completed for I-83, work that I've seen completed for other municipalities as part of HATS, Harrisburg Area Transportation Study, I would probably place the value on what we're asking for a little bit higher than the $20,000, but we wouldn't be able to, you know, we're not offering any additional funds. We're going to put it out there as a $20,000 project, knowing that it probably will cost the firm, you know, a little bit more than what they would normally get and hope that they take the work as sort of a loss leader. I mean, it's a way to, we're the capital city, and there's a lot to be said for having completed a project like this in the capital city. If we don't get the proposal we want, we could potentially scale it back with the approval of the granting, you know, authority, but that's the plan.
When do you anticipate this starting?
Rebecca, do you have any, sorry, this is Jeffrey. Rebecca, do you have an idea of when, you know, the grant would be awarded and work could start?
Hey, hi, Council again. So they anticipate being able to make awards in fall. Like everything else, deadlines have been pushed back, and this grant deadline actually itself, the application deadline was pushed back. They anticipate reviewing applications in August, September, and making awards in fall. So the funding should be released, it could be released as early as late fall or early spring.
Okay. Okay, so this, it could just be routes, it won't be actual?
Let me hang up.
To answer Councilwoman Daniels' question, yes, this is just a proposal for identifying routes. This would not be shovels-in-the-ground implementation.
Okay. Okay, so I'll turn over to my colleagues. Does anyone have any questions? I'll start with Council President Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. My question to Wayne or to Jeffrey is, the data you're using, would this support how much you think by bicycles, by the residents in the city of Harrisburg?
You're saying, yes, so the goal would be, again, to identify those trip generators, like for example, the high school. And, you know, presumably, you know, some kids, I'm sure, do bike to school, and certainly many more could, given, you know, how relatively small the catchment basin is for the school. And we'd be identifying, okay, what, where are the danger points? What is discouraging people from deciding to bike? And is there a way around that? Is there a way to address that? And in other places, it might be, you know, something like the downtown. It might be like the Market Square or the State Capitol complex and identifying, you know, what are the barriers there? And I think in a lot of cases, those are fairly evident. We have a lot of, again, the bridges that cross 83 or cross Cameron Street, and it would be helping to identify, okay, how do we get around these? What would the design on the street or in the public right of way look like?
So you would bring back that data, and before we vote on a resolution to do this work, you would bring back another data and resolution to substantiate?
That's correct. I mean, I would guess that, again, what will happen after this is that we would likely go after additional grant funding from DCD, from DEP, from whomever DOT, and we would use this, the results of this grant, the study that this grant application will fund, to say, here is, you know, a bike lane along Dairy Street, for example, and it was identified through this other study that we conducted as a necessary component of a kind of comprehensive citywide bike network.
Okay. My concern is that, I know we've done the bike route on Front Street, and I very seldom see more than five or six bikes utilizing that particular route. I see them on the sidewalk. So I just wanted to know, have some type of data to support this resolution. Now, my next question is, how would you determine the destinations of where these barriers would be?
Jeff, if you don't mind, I think, I think part of the, when we wrote the scope work for the work to be completed under this grant, there was, there's really three parts. One would be public outreach, and so some of the things that you asked about, or Jeff said, hey, you know, where are these barriers? Part of the barriers will be identified doing what we call low-stress analysis, and that's done just based on the volumes of traffic and the speed of the traffic on the street. But there's also a component that has, you know, community surveys. Where do you see the barriers? What would, what would, what would it take to get you in a bicycle to commute, you know, to your employment place down here? Or do you bike, and where are you uncomfortable biking? So that's the other part. And then the third part is sort of a marketing thing. You know, the bike share that was deployed downtown Harrisburg and uptown, midtown, has been very successful. So I think there is an appetite for biking in the Harrisburg area, but what, what kind of marketing could it be? What kind of wayfinding signage perhaps would make it even more attractive? If someone knew where the routes, the safer routes might be, would they be more apt to use biking as a, you know, to commute?
Okay. And you only have two locations for the downtown area? Are you thinking about utilizing some other areas in the downtown?
So the way we wrote it is we picked, I want to say six, I had to look at the scope, six points of interest. So you start at, if you were starting in South Allison Hill and you wanted to go downtown, well, is there a low-stress route that you could take? And if so, where are those barriers? So that'd be more like a computer model. Another location we picked was Hamilton Health Center. If you were, you know, coming from downtown to Hamilton Health or South Allison Hill to Hamilton Health Center, you know, where's that, where's that low-stress route? And where are the barriers in between? So a lot of this stuff is just an analysis done on a, on a mapping system, you know, as a GIS system.
Okay. I just see, well, Hamilton Health, I just see as a highly traveled route, and also it's a congested area at some points of time during the day. I agree with you with the Boys and Girls Club because they do need, have access to the downtown area from the Allison Hill, also with the Harrisburg High. I just think we need to look at some other, some other destination points, that's all.
President Williams, if I could jump in?
Sure, Rebecca, go ahead.
The six points that we identified in the scope, and again, we haven't submitted the scope yet because the grant is not due until July 2nd.
Right. I said, I see that, I understand, go ahead.
It's Broad Street Market, Camp Curtin YMCA, Harrisburg High School, Leaking School, the HSD Administrative Building, Hamilton Health Center, and the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, I'm very much aware of that. I just think with the Hamilton Health Center, that's on a highly traveled, it comes from the interstate onto 17th Street. It's highly traveled, and also it's a congested area. And then they will begin the construction of a marijuana, medical building there. So I just think we need to look at another destination point instead of Hamilton Health. That's all I have, Ms. Daniels, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Vice President Allen?
I don't have any questions this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bowers?
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I do have a question that I received from a resident. I think you talked about it a little bit, but I just wanted to pose the question and gain some more clarity. It's in reference to the public outreach plan. So the question was, will public notice and comment be required before any lanes are removed? So you mentioned a survey. I just wanted to know if that would be citywide or just in around the six points of interest? And then if you could please share more of the marketing that would be done with this?
Wayne, do you want to handle that aspect, that question?
Sure, so the survey, unfortunately, you know, we were hoping it'd be sort of a public meeting and then, you know, combined with like online surveys or handwritten surveys. You know, depending on how long this current situation lasts, we might have to do the bulk of it on a, on a online type or phone call type system. But we wouldn't be, the grant itself would be a planning grant, so it's more about us getting feedback from the community rather than putting in, you know, actually using it to put in bike lanes. It would be, the purpose of it is, it's a planning grant, right? So where would the community think we, bike lanes would be most effective and things, you know, things like that? So there'd be plenty of time for individual projects, public outreach. This is more, you know, where, where do you see the needs? You know, we'll do an analysis on the low-stress network, but that, but that's just a computer-generated need list that may not really make sense in the community. And I'm sorry, the second part of the question dealt with, oh, the marketing?
Yeah.
So maybe marketing might have not been the right word? Maybe branding would be a better word? A lot of, a lot of cities have their own sort of pavement markings when you're talking about bike boulevards, which are roads that are, you know, low speed. Bikes will be bicyclists and walkers, and things feel comfortable traveling those corridors because the traffic is light and stuff like that. So signage, you know, wayfinding signage, it'd be more of a branding effort than a marketing effort, I think. But, you know, creating maps that are usable, maybe web, maybe, maybe the planning grant would recommend the development of a web app or something that could be used, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Bowers, I think to your point, you had mentioned in the comment from the public that they were asking where lanes would be created. I don't think that this is always going to recommend removing a vehicular lane, for example, putting in a bike lane, or maybe even putting in a bike lane at all. In some cases, it may be, as Wayne said, making it just easier to find information about bicycling and about ways around the city. Or it may, or it might be doing a bike boulevard, which is really just identifying a low-stress route and putting a little, you know, bicycle in a circle at the beginning of every block so that somebody who's riding it knows, okay, this is the way I follow to get across town and not have to, you know, worry too much about speeding vehicles or something like that. So it's not always, you know, in terms of an adversarial trade-off of space. Sometimes it's just markings on the street, and sometimes it's just information out to the public.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Councilwoman Green?
No, I don't have any questions at the time, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mattson?
No questions to comment. I like the idea and concept of incorporating more bike lanes into the city and making it a greener city, but I am eager to review the comprehensive plan and attach the sort of policy to the wider strategy of planning with the city. So, but yeah, no, that's it for me. Okay.
Thank you. So just to clarify, so we're surveying the whole city, but just focusing on those stress points, right? Or is it that we're just focusing on those six stress points?
No, this is definitely a city, a citywide planning effort. I think the stress points are, would be used sort of in the computer-generated analysis. So we would, we pick sites that people may want to bike to. Of course, somebody might want to bike to a park that's not on that list, but we had to pick points that we know people may want to bike to. And then from there, it will, those points then will be the points for, to start the analysis. And from there, there'll be a low-stress network that's developed out of that point. How do you get from, say, South Allison Hill to Hamilton Health Center, right? So you have to sort of connect the dots. We could, you know, the more points you pick, the more costly the analysis becomes. So we just tried to pick a, you know, five or six points across the city that we thought, you know, could be helpful. We may not solve every, every issue, but it's something to build off of. And like Jeff said, it's the, we're mostly interested in the gaps, in the barriers. And, you know, we know Cameron Street and the bridges and the hills are often barriers on bicycles because, you know, no one wants to ride up. Market Street could be a great route on paper, but when you actually try to ride a bicycle up Market Street, it, you know, it doesn't always work for everyone. It's a different type of biker that would want to bike up Market Street than, than a casual commuter or a family. So it's things like that, that we just had to pick points to scope out the project. And those six points could change, as Council President Williams said. If those don't make sense, we can look at others. But we did want to just pick places that we thought people would bike to and from and start there. And then the network itself will start to generate with the public input and the computer models and things like that.
Okay, so how long will it take to complete the survey?
I would guess this would be three, well, the community outreach portion may take a couple months. So you're looking at three, four-month process.
Okay. And you said this kind of is supposed to mesh up a little bit with the comprehensive plan, but we don't really, we don't technically have a comprehensive plan. So how, how are you making that decision?
Well, again, we're, you know, we're in the process with the comprehensive plan right now. The Planning Commission is kind of moving into their last review phase, and we anticipate that it will be moving forward to you guys probably before a decision is even made on the awarding of the grant. So it's expected that we will, that you all will have the document and that we'll have our public review period by the time this is awarded, much less by the time we secure a contract with a consultant. So it should actually transition pretty well into the adoption of the comp plan into this proposed study.
Do you think, I mean, do you think right now is a good time to do the survey, given like how much? Do you think, I mean, do you think right now is a good time to do the survey, given like how much is in flux in terms of how people are moving and how they will, probably move once the economy opens back up? And I mean, I think one of the things from, this hoopla is that every person now knows that telecommuting is a lot more accessible than they thought. So I think, I, I wouldn't be surprised if both employers and employees are reconsidering how they used to do work before. Which I think is, work is a lot of the purpose for transportation. Um, so do you think the survey, I mean, I don't, do you think the survey would be good? Is, if we apply for the grant and get it, do we have to do the survey this year?
Um, I mean, eh, um, Rebecca can answer that part. I think really what the, and what the uh environment looks like, um, after this is anybody's guess. I mean, we really have no idea how long this will be. Will, for example, cat ridership rebound to where we were uh pre pandemic? Um, you know, maybe not. Maybe people won't feel comfortable doing that. Um, and uh, what, what a lot of other cities have seen um is that there has been this shift and what they're anticipating is that, at least some of this shift uh to bicycling and walking will remain af- even after restrictions are lifted and everything. So, um, it's likely that the future will see an increased rate of uh these kinds of things. Um, with respect to the telecommuting aspect, um, I think it is likely that uh there will be more telecommuting, but it may also be the case that, you know, people will be so happy to get out of their house and engaging with people that they will be looking to actually travel more because they've been cooped up for, three months plus now. Um, it may also be the case that um, as the economy transitions to something more like telecommuting, people won't necessarily want to work from their homes, but they may want to work from uh the library or the coffee shop. And they'll still need to be able to get to those places as well. Um, and what it may just happen is that the mode share uh transitions, less from your average daily rush hour commute to more of just moving about the city uh on your own or your community, uh, on your own, you know, doing a greater variety of things in a given day. Um, it's really, I mean, we're really in obviously uncharted waters for what this means um for the, for our country and for, you know, Harrisburg going forward. So um, a lot of what this study will do is, really find those preferences and see what that landscape looks like.
And Rebecca, do you know, like if we get the money, do we have to use it this year?
Um, so the scope of the grant is one year from the date of the award. So if we were awarded, say, October twenty twenty, we would have until uh the end of September twenty twenty one to use the fund. That side, we always go back to the granting agency and request an extension of the, of the term of the grant for reasons such as those that you suggest. We can't develop grant extension, but in general, if you have a good reason for needing an exception, uh, you make your case though, or certainly it was.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you so much. Um, I'll just recommend that this be added to the agenda for the next legislative session. Um, just make sure uh Council President Williams uh has the answers to the questions she asked before then.
Okay.
Um, and um, yes, Kirk, could you read the, the following ordinance?
Sure. Resolution thirty-three of twenty twenty. It's a resolution authorizing the submission of a, grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails and Recreation Program, to help fund the construction of two spray parks to replace two aging pools.
And does someone want to, uh, who, who for the city wants to present?
Um, I can present the grant and the Nando Baker is on the call to help explain, talk more about the project. So this is a beginning of building funding, um, of which we will need a lot. Most of that will need to come from grants to, um, to, to figure out how to handle the pool issue. Um, the idea is to build spray parks where either where some of the pools already are or in a different location. We expect a spray park that will be of the size that we need to handle the city's population. Um, will cost somewhere between six hundred fifty, seven fifty and a million per site. So we, we're going to need to build a lot of funding. This is just sort of a first shot across the bow. Um, the two main agencies that have the kind of funding that, that is um, for which a, a pool or an aquatic recreation facility would be eligible are this, this one, D C E D, G T R P, and then D C N R. Um, the issue that we are applying for D C N R grants is we never have the match funding. D C N R grants require a one-to-one match. Uh, the D C E D grants only require fifteen percent. So the strategy, it's a very long-term strategy is to, apply for these D C E D grants every chance we get, which is every year. And then if you get money, through this grant, we would use that as our match funding when we apply for D C N R grants. So um, this, the, the ceiling you can request from this program is two hundred fifty thousand. That, that would be the ask that um we would be submitting. And this is, this is for construction funds. Again, it's a long shot because we're so early in the project, but um, we've discovered with the C E D that the more you put projects in front of them, year after year, they become familiar with them. You become familiar, myself, with the people at the C E D who work in this area. And it just helps, you know, each time around when we go back to them for money, which we will keep doing, they know more and more about the project. So this is kind of just a first step.
Um, okay, so um, so are we asking for money to repair the pools?
Dave, maybe you want to jump on at this point and talk about the spray parks. Um, this is actually to build bricks.
Yeah, so what we're looking at tonight is um, you know, we're, we're requesting uh, you know, the authorization to ask for, for funding for the spray park uh plans. Um, you, we can get into to pool repairs and things like that if you want to as well, but, we're, this is definitely just for uh the beginning stages of the two spray parks we would like to, um, put in place of our, our failing pools as of now.
Wh- where would you put these spray parks?
So part of uh what we'd like to get done uh would, would really give us the feasibility of the spray parks, in the existing areas. And then it would hopefully give us um a couple of different options of locations uh that would be, most suitable for an additional spray park. Um, our biggest,
I think you broke, you went silent, Dave. Hello?
Okay, my screen is, is back now.
So go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I apologize. We seem to have technical difficulties here. Um, so basically, uh, what we'd like to get done for one of these uh studies would be to, to tell us, what would be physical, feasible locations for these spray parks. Um, we know at Jackson Lick, we really don't have the footprint necessary to uh put a large, an actual spray park. Uh, we could do a spray pad, a smaller size. You know, area there uh for the public, but uh a place like Hall Manor, you know, that, that would be a,
You broke up again.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
All right. Uh, due to our technical issues, I'll try and make it real quick. So we are looking for feasibility studies. You guys get that?
Yes.
All right. Um, th- that's really our first step is we need to find the, the best place, um, to have the pools, you know, to, or to, to put the spray parks themselves. And once we know, um, you know, what, what our options are, then, you know, we, we can move forward with the, the monies from D C N R, D C E D. You know, in regards to, to putting up these parks. Um, and, and it's, it's kind of like, you know, as Rebecca said, it's a, it's a really long process we're looking at here. So there's a lot of, a lot of steps we're hoping to take one by one.
And what's the deadline for this application?
Uh, the deadline is July thirty first. Uh, July thirty first?
Okay, I'm going to um, defend our technical issues. I'll just go to my colleagues. Um, and if you could uh ask questions, um, ask for information you would like and um, and just generally what your thoughts are before I move on to the, like the next person. So start with uh President Williams.
Okay, Mr. Baker, I really don't have any questions. Um, I'm just concerned, or yes, I do. I'm sorry, I do have one. What will you do with the existing pools then? You said that you don't have the blueprint for a spray park at Jackson Lick. So what would you do with that area?
So I think this is something that uh, once we do the feasibility, once we do the feasibility studies, uh, that should hopefully give us a, a much better idea of, uh, what options we have for the pools.
Okay. So we, basically, we should wait until the study is completed. You can come back to council and give us a better, uh, definition of, of what's going to happen, where it's going to happen at, and how much money would be involved, because I'm sure it would be more money involved, uh, with the existing pools as they are.
So to, this is Mark. Um, just to provide a little background, uh, we had done uh, a few years ago, a um, study on the pools that, as they, as they currently are. And what would be needed to bring them up to par? Uh, the pools are really a monetary drain because they have so, they're, they, they probably reached their economic life and they need to be replaced. Uh, but in order to do that, each pool, um, it's a considerable amount of money to, build a new pool. And we're talking tens of millions of dollars. So in the alternative, because we know that um, you know, this type of outdoor activity, um, i- is, um, is needed, um, there are alternatives, uh splash pads and splash parks. Given the size of, of Jackson Lick, it's probably more conducive to a splash, splash pad. Uh, and our other pool is a large, it's a larger um, uh, size. And it's probably more conducive to a splash park. But what we want to be able to do, is before we are able to ask different organizations and especially D C E D, uh, C D G B, um, for funds to uh construct a splash pad or splash park, we want to have a feasibility study to one, see what the configurations would be. And then also to get an idea of how much it would cost to do it. Um, and since there are existing pools there, there might be an added expense to fill in those pools, et cetera. So this is that type of study that will let us know what we are up against in terms at those sites, and how much money we will have to, one, uh, be able to put up, we go to grant and, 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 and the money we need for grants. So the idea behind this is really just to get a lay of the land. So everybody knows what the cost of these, these uh splash pads or splash parks would be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wayne. I'm certainly agreeable to doing that. I don't want to put a hundred, another hundred thousand dollars into a pool. Since I've been on council, we've put uh a hundred thousand dollars into that, both pools in the last four or five years. So I'm, I'm just excited to hear about uh what is planned for those two areas. And I certainly would agree, that a splash park would be better, or splash pool would be better. I have an opportunity at some of the conferences that I attend. And I've spoke to a lot of uh individuals who, ex- whose expertise is pools. And I think it's a better opportunity for our children because then it will cut down on the fighting. And some of the uh fight flooding and some of the, and there are other interactivities that, that occur there. So I am agreeable to this, but I'd just like to know the specifics. That's all. Yes, thank you.
Uh, next, uh, Vice President Allen.
I, I don't have any questions. I, I concur with Council President's statements too. I think we've seen so much money uh being thrown at the pools and we know about the, long-term, um, I mean, obviously, we all know the long-term viability of it isn't too much. So, I'm excited to see where this goes with the grant money, to see what we can come up with and how we can uh continue to add value to, um, the parks program with these splash parks. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Green?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, though.
Okay, Councilwoman uh Madison?
Uh, no questions for me. Thanks.
Okay, um, because of the, excuse me, because of the technical, issues, I would like a, a little bit more time with this. I'm not going to recommend it for about at the next legislative session. Um, in the meantime, if folks could send whatever questions you have um to Bo, to Mr. Wally and Dave and Rebecca. Um, and we can get whatever questions you have. My concern generally is I do think at the very least the city needs, to have a pool. Uh, you know, I, 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 I also kind of think because of the times we're in, and I know some of this will be resolved once we know what happens medically, but I don't know that the splash thing will be, the most sanitary thing if there isn't um, a treatment or a prevention for COVID. So, you know, some kind of like, uh, there are a lot of these questions that I might, I have too, um, about what it is. But also, I mean, you know, swimming is a valuable skill. Um, it's really important. It's one of the best a- activities for strong lungs and, um, uh, and I think it's uh really important. Plus, people do get swimming scholarships. So I think we want to uh find some way of making sure that, that, that's an opportunity for our residents. But um, yeah, so if folks could send questions to Wally, um, Baker and Volmar, um, and just see, see me on those questions. And, and we'll just postpone this and hopefully we can um, have a better conversation. And apologies to everyone because some of it is my inability to also um, access uh documents while, anyways, uh, so uh let's uh revisit this uh later. Um, does anyone have, questions or comments on, i- is there any public comment on, on these resolutions, Kirk?
Not on these resolutions, but I, I'm not sure if there's any time sensitivity or if anyone asked a question about that, with regards to the deadline for the uh submission of the grant application?
Yeah, it's July thirty first.
Okay.
Hey, Kirk, there was a public comment. I, I tried to get you in the chat. There, there was a, a public comment for this particular, um, well, actually it was the first resolution discussed about the bicycle lanes.
Uh, do you have it? Do you have it with you, Chardane? Could you read it, please? I don't have it.
Give me, give me one second. Um, here we go. Okay, he said, this is Richard Martinez. Um, his residence twenty-six, twelve North Seventh Street. And his question is, are the bike lanes being planned as offshoots or extensions from the green belt? Or will they be isolated strips like the ones in the downtown area?
So Mr. Knight or Mr. Martin, are you available to answer those questions?
Um, yeah, I, I could certainly a- answer that question. The, the outcome of the planning grant would be to, to uh show us what a network, a, a fully, a, a fully developed bicycle network would, would look like or could look like in the city of Harrisburg. So that would include connections to the existing, uh, green belt infrastructure, uh Riverfront Park infrastructure. Um, and then the, the one, the few that we have downtown that, that are currently sort of isolated. So it would be a, it would be a plan, it's a planning grant, um, that would show us a, an entire network and then, utilize that network to uh, get it, other grants, other implementation, an implementation strategy of uh where to uh build, a- a- and, and how much it would cost and identify, you know, maybe the top ten projects to build out a multimodal network. and and how much it would cost and identify, you know, maybe the top 10 projects to build out a multimodal network.
Any other, any other public comments on this?
Ms. Daniels, I do have one question that I would like for them to tell me. What is the $37,500 batch that the city has to put with this particular resolution 33? What funding would that come out of?
Hi, President Williams, it's Rebecca. So that is that we, given the state of everything with the coronavirus, we don't know if city CBDG funding would be available to cover that match.
Right.
We would need to seek other sources of funding.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just let me know what what funding that's going to be coming out of if it doesn't come out of the CBDG money.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I guess that's it for my portion of the meeting.
Okay, Ms. Daniels, thank you so much. We will move on to Community Economic Development Committee. And Mr. Madsen, are you are you there?
I am.
Okay, I'm turning it over to you now, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you, President Williams. We will be discussing Resolution 35. Mr. Piotrowski, could you read it into the minutes?
Yes, Resolution 35 of 2020 is a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the City of Harrisburg 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan and 2018 to 2022 Consolidated Plan to Incorporate New Activities and Funding to Respond to the COVID-19 Pandemic as Provided by for by the CARES Act.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Piotrowski. Is there someone from the administration to present the resolution?
Yes, it's Mark Woolley and Lilly Williams should be on as well. This resolution is really to amend both the consolidated and the action plans to address some of the issues that are surrounding the COVID-19. Specifically, the plans do not mention anything with regard to economic development or small business assistance. So we want to make sure that we add those to the plan. And then Lilly, if you're on, you can go in more detail about the other, the amendments.
Sure, as I presented the plan and the monies on May 5th, I can go over that again if you would like. It was just to to include all the CARES funds for C D B G and E S G. We would like to allocate $422,000 and $382.00 to public services. We also would like to give $500,000 towards small business loans. We also would like to, we have to give $230,595, I'm sorry, $230,595 in administrative purposes. And that's just for E S G. As I stated before, an E S G fund was granted $578,217. And that would cover the Rapid Release Program, the H M I S, emergency shelter and admin costs. These funds have not been drawn down as far as in I D I S yet where we can use them. However, it we, this is why we are amending the program of the amendments to the consolidated and action plan so we can get this approved and submit it into HUD and then those monies could be drawn down for use.
Is that it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so long story short, we're just amending what was previously proposed, just making there are big changes, but essentially some subtle changes, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Do you foresee any other changes happening in the foreseeable future?
Not at this time. I am on weekly calls with HUD every Tuesday and at this time, there has not been any changes.
All right, I don't have any further questions, so I'll pass along to my colleagues at this stage. President Williams, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Madsen. On page five of this resolution, I am looking that you're going to have a virtual public hearing. Was held on May 28th, so it should be, will be held on May 28th. You're going to have that virtual hearing?
Yes, May 28th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, because you have it was held. Now, from May 8th to May 12th, that was a public comment period. Did you get a lot of comments from the public regarding this plan?
No, no, we did not. We actually didn't receive one.
Oh, okay. Now, the city consulted with the Harrisburg Housing Authority on their needs of their residents. What were some of the needs that the Harrisburg Housing Authority assessment? What type of needs do they need and what, how will it fit in this plan?
Rental assistance. A lot of tenants are not being able to afford to pay their monthly rent. Also, for helping with paying utilities and with food as well.
Thank you, I've read that, but I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of the the funding that will be available to them.
Yes, yes.
Now, I'm just concerned that I would like to see more in public services. I would like to see more money go into the for blighting and removal of some of the homes in the city of Harrisburg. I had an opportunity on Monday to ride through the city of Harrisburg. And at that time, the bliteness is really very, very bad. The structures, there's about 32, 35 structures that need to come down. I'd like to see more money for the removal of those structures if if there's, if that's possible or if it's through the federal program, if they allow you to do that.
Well, there's a couple of things. One, this is for the monies that are coming now are specifically for those that are related to COVID-19.
Okay.
We had discussions about, you know, public facility dollars going in from this going into public facilities. And that's a hard case to make that, you know, that that any expenses in public facilities would be COVID-related.
Right.
In addition, when we're talking about demoing certain properties, typically we're talking about emergency situations. The federal funds, when it comes to demolition, are subject to a number of requirements, not the least of which is an environmental review, which can take a long time. And it would probably negate the ability to demo an emergent situation. And so for those cases, we draw down on the on the general fund to do that. Because we're doing, we're talking about the consolidated plan. I think that in our discussions for maybe next year's budget for federal funds, if we can, if we see a particular area in the city where there are not emergent demos that need to be done, we can use C D G B to assist in those demolitions. But in the past, we've used them, we used federal funds to take down emergent houses. And we've run into some compliance issues with HUD and we just don't want to go back to that state.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woolley. I understand that very much, I mean, very well. I understand that we've received funding on March 31st of this year, 2020. I'd just like to see an excessive amount of money put into that area for the blighted areas. It is a health hazard. And not only that, it's a structural hazard for those buildings to be vacant as long as they've been vacant and for them not to be taken down. You have individuals who are homeless that will utilize those buildings and then they cause tremendous fires and also as, as, you know, death. Because I had an opportunity to visit those those areas as I indicated on the Allison Hill area and which the city of Harrisburg should have taken those buildings down, have not done in the last 12 or 15 years. So when we do look at the C B G money coming in, I'd like to see money put into that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, President Williams.
You're welcome.
Mark, was there any follow up there?
We will take, we've approved some monies and Lilly, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think in this year's action plan, there's a hundred thousand dollars for demo. We can look at augmenting that for next year. And in conjunction with the administration's affordable housing initiatives that we intend to roll out, I think that'll be an appropriate allocation.
Okay, I mean, how do we encourage individuals to come into the city of Harrisburg when we look at the structure buildings that are blighted the way they are? And and we continuously allow them to stay up instead of taking them down and utilizing some of that money to rebuild? I just need to see a revitalization in some of those areas as we have revitalized the Third Street area. I'd like to see the Allison Hill as well as the uptown area revitalized. And usage of that money would certainly benefit those particular two destinations. Thank you, Mr. Madsen.
Okay. All right, Vice President Allen.
I don't have any questions this time. I would just make sure we make those corrections on the appendix for before we have a final vote on it. Just update the the rubbish.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bowers?
Thank you, Councilwoman Madsen, I do have a few questions. Going back to the virtual public hearing that will be held next Thursday, Lilly, at 6:00 PM, what platform and how can the residents participate in the meeting?
It will be most likely on YouTube or Facebook Live. I believe Moment told me YouTube. And we are going to give a web web address. And it tells them the steps how to go on and log on and ask their questions if they have any additional questions. As I said, we didn't get any questions as of yet, but if on the 28th, there's some people that may have questions, we would answer them at that time.
Okay, thank you. My second question is regarding the small business assistance. So I'm looking at the chart on, it's in the consolidated plan, it's on page 124, table 52. So it shares that 250 jobs are created and retained and 50 businesses are assisted through this. But I just wanted to clarify, are these 50 new businesses?
Right.
And then my second question is, if so, will contractors who do business for the city within the Building and Housing Department be considered as an eligible business to receive funding?
They do not have to be new businesses, they can be already established. When we do get the information, they have to, we will provide a checklist to to follow of the guidelines. And it tells what they are, what the requirements are and what we, what they need to do to be qualified. Once we receive that information, we go over everything and then we can make a decision at that time if they qualify for the monies or they do not. At this time, we have not decided how much it's going to be between $5,000 and $10,000 for each this small business. But we have, it's not written in stone yet, we are still, you know, earning out the wrinkles.
Okay. And then the second part was, would contractors who do business with the city through the Department of Building and Housing be eligible for potential funding?
Yes, they will be.
As of the checklist?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much for all of your work, Lilly, and your colleagues within the department.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowers. Councilwoman Green?
Thanks, Councilwoman Madsen. I don't have any questions at the time, most of my questions have already been asked.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
I don't have any questions, I may email questions later.
Please do.
Mr. Madsen, I have one more question.
All right, President Williams.
Mr. Woolley, I'm looking on page 122 and under your goal summary information, under the category is affordable housing. And then the needs addressed is the demolition and blight removal. So you have $600,000. So your plan is to demolish 20 buildings between that period of between now and 2022?
That's that's the goal. That's the goal.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that's what I'm what I'm seeing in this plan is correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Madsen.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to add, I know we discussed it before, is if there's any sub recipients interested in that were providing childcare, did we find any? And were any of the dollars provided, given to them that would provide assistance for childcare?
So in the beginning, you'll know that we had the action plan and the consolidated plan. Prior, just prior to the COVID crisis, we were putting together an RFP that was to go out to see if there would be any sub recipients that would be be interested in having a aftercare program, well, childcare I should say, to enable working parents some flexibility. And part of the RFP was going to be have extended hours and early hours. So we already have the ability to allocate funds for those types of services through sub recipients. And I think Lilly has some information about some of the engagement that that's happened since the the crisis.
So currently, Crystal has reached out to the Y W C A and they are interested in running a program for COVID, getting COVID funds and how to go about getting those funds. We're in the process of drafting up agreement with the city and the Y W C A to tell them what the requirements would be for people to apply. And for example, if they're receiving a childcare network and let's say childcare and they don't have enough to pay their co-pay, then we can fund, we can fund their co-pay and childcare network can pay their portion. Let's say they don't have enough money to pay period because they're just getting back to work. We would be able to fund that whole entire childcare as well, expense as well.
Okay. That's great. So I guess, once, once we iron out the details a little bit, will something come before council to talk about or give an update to that way we can help promote information so that folks out in the community know if they need help with childcare, they can use this resource?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Okay, that is it for me. Okay, President Williams?
Are we just having, Lilly, are we just having one meeting for the public or you're going to have more than one?
We're just having one for the comment period for the comm plan and the action plan, it would just be one.
Do you think we should not have another meeting just in case those who cannot participate in that on May 28th?
We we can, yes, absolutely. By HUD rules, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, yeah, as a follow up, we probably should have, we should offer them another comment period instead of one because of of the crisis that we're in right now. I think we should be able to open everyone's home when they may not be able to address some of the questions that they have. So let's, can we not just open it up to another meeting within another two week period or a week period after this? A week after the May?
Sure.
Okay, I would certainly like to see that, give everyone an opportunity to address this plan.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen.
Thank you, President Williams. Anybody else? Okay, with that, if you have any suggested amendments or questions, please send them along and CC me on them. And with that, we'll put it on our next legislative. And, uh, with that, we'll put it on our next legislative, uh, session for a vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mattson. Mr. Petrovsky, is there any public comment?
Uh, yes, it's not related to, uh, what's on the agenda, but we did receive a public comment from a Dante Lebrun. And there were two questions. One was, will city council be in support of the common sense House Bill 80 Drivers License Suspension Amnesty Program? Which will help hundreds of thousands of citizens. And two, will it be an alderman initiative in the ward to help bring neighborhood leadership to the urban poverty plagued neighborhoods of Harrisburg?
Okay, can you get his, uh, information from him and we'll make sure that we address that, those questions?
Sure.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Petrovsky?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, council members, anything else? Okay, just want to encourage everyone again to get out to vote. Uh, voting is June 2nd, 2020. Uh, you could go on the website and get an application if you, if you do not want to come out to vote. And that website is votespa.com. Telephone number by, you can get a mail-in application, 877-868-3772. I'm encouraging everyone, please ask for a mail-in application and please vote on June 2nd, 2020. Deadline for the mail-in application is May 26th, 2020. Here in other business, uh, this meeting is officially adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Charlie, should we read them? There was one more that he just sent in a comment regarding one of the resolutions.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I review? Okay. Um, there, this is from Robert Showoff, Schoff, excuse me, and he's located at 1511 Green Street and it's regarding Resolution 32. And he said, hello, city council needs to review the work for the Harrisburg Plan Commission did last year in the review of the 2017 Community Comprehensive Plan from the 120 community meetings. This document contained information from a citywide bicycle network that was worked on and cited by the National League of American Bike, 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 I can't get it out, bicyclists, excuse me. And then his questions were, what happened to any of the public comment from 2017, 2018? And the appearance of non-compliant bike lanes as they relate to a community-supported effort led by both bicycle experts and Harrisburg residents? And then his second question was, does city council have any list of Harrisburg residents slash bicyclists? Or folks who work on the two, who worked on the 2015, 2016 effort with the NLAB? Uh, where, were there any public participatory engagement meetings allocated to make sure that process is followed? Um, he said, this is a question of overlapping public funds and a lack of providing a continuous chain of public engagement that can be traced, that is understood as a history of process. Um, he said at 7:00 PM, there were eight people watching on YouTube and as of 6:40, the meeting was, was at 4:00 PM. I'm not really understanding what that means. He said, city council, the Harrisburg Planning Commission and the administration have a huge civic engagement issue with any future engagement for a population of 50,000 at 70% persons of color and 30% poverty rate, knowing the issues of limited technology, equipment and connectivity. These are incredibly important discussion points.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Houston. We will not address, we will not answer his question tonight, but you do have his address so that we can return an answer to him?
I do.
Okay, and we will do that. We will forward a response.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
That was it that I can see.
Okay, thank you. Again, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.